To our July 27, 2017, City of Palaca Commission meeting. We're gonna hold one second for most previous. That's okay, we're all waiting to hear. We're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Gary Taylor, Pastor Tabernacle Baptist Church of Palaca, followed by the pledge. Reverend Taylor can read us a book.
Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you boldly but humbly. Father, seeking your blessings of prosperity upon our city. Father, that you'll protect our community, our children, our streets. Father, the public servants who put their lives in danger day in and day out. God, we ask that you'll guide this commission. Father, that you'll give them the wisdom they need to make the decisions that are best for our future. Father, we thank you, we praise you, in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hill?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Brown, please. Mr. Warren?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Williams, here. All members are present. The Senate floor and the other floor.
Thank you. Before we get started, I need a motion to accept the amended agenda. We also wanna move items six and five around so that we take item six before act five. I'll let Senator move it. It's time for some movement.
Second.
This is motion is second on the floor by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Does anyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from the July 13 meeting of this year, as well as the budget workshop on the same day?
Pass the budget workshop.
Just the...
Just the regular meeting.
The regular meeting. Minute mark. Motion to approve regular meeting minute. This is motion is second on the floor. Is there any readiness?
Question.
Questions called simultaneously. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of our agenda, which is our public recognition and presentations, and we have quite a few today. I'm gonna ask Ms. Pam Gears, Walton Pelashir Jr., while they're present.
My brother's not able to be here, he's out of town.
Ms. Gears.
Hi, thank you for coming.
And we have a proclamation memorial. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Pauline Elizabeth Rideout Pelashir, born December 16, 1926, daughter of longtime county commissioner and school board member Lawrence Lincoln and Lilia Ruth Rideout of West Putnam County, passed peacefully to the next life on Wednesday, July 5, 2017, at the graceful age of 90 years. And whereas Pauline, who jokingly called herself "the queen of McMeacon", attended the Johnson School in the nearby historic Crossroads Community of Johnson through eighth grade and graduated from Melrose High School in 1945. A longtime member of First Baptist Church of Palaca, she served in the nursery and taught children Sunday School. And whereas after graduation from high school, Pauline joined the U.S. Cadet Nurse Corps in Jacksonville. After moving to Palaca, she worked for Dr. Mayo Hiddick as a dental assistant. And she told many stories of working there. And whereas Pauline married Ernest Walton Pelashir on August 23, 1947, at the home of her aunt Betty Ruth Avril in Palaca, they had two children. Pamela Sue Pelashir Garris, again your whole name, and Ernest Walton Jr. and had four grandchildren. And whereas her husband, E.W. Walton Pelashir Sr., was the elected sheriff of Putnam County in 1954, Pauline's life revolved around serving the people of Putnam County for some 33 years during his tenure as sheriff. As the wife of the sheriff, she was a licensed deputy sheriff and served as a matron of the jail. She managed the kitchen, supervised the feeding inmates, feeding of inmates, and had other miscellaneous duties such as tending to alcoholics in withdrawal. And whereas thousands have benefited from Pauline's generosity, numerous neglected and abused children were brought into her home, cleaned up and given a new start by Pauline since there was no juvenile shelter or children's services. Hundreds of food baskets were prepared and given to the needy through the Salvation Army, whom they represented in the community. Pauline and Walton held dozens of barbecues annually for any organization who wanted to raise money for a good cause. She often said she had mixed enough barbecue sauce to pollute the St. John's River. And whereas at the age of 50, Pauline founded Walton Barbecue and still managed it after the age of 80, Pauline also purchased and lovingly restored the Connet Home circa 1884 in the South Historic District of Palaca, according to bed and breakfast specifications, saving it for future generations as she briefly lived in the home. Now therefore, I, Terry O'Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim July 28, 2017, as a day of mourning upon the passing of Pauline Elizabeth Rideout Pelashir, and ask all citizens to join it in paying tribute to this godly woman, Proverbs 31, who made immeasurable contributions to our community and its citizens, for which we are all grateful and whose work will live on through her legacy. And witness whereof appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed to the city of Palaca, Florida on this 27th day of July, year of our Lord, 2017. Terry O'Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Warren, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill-Williams, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion approved.
Second.
This is motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We wanna present this to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for honoring my mother. Thank you so much for honoring my mother. And if she weren't here, she would say that Palaca was good to her and that she loved it.
Any comments from the commission?
I probably knew this Pauline better than a lot of the people sitting here. And my first thing with her was knowing that she was the deputy jail. I didn't go to jail, but it made me wanna stay out. My dad had somebody that passed away and they were in the jail. And he took me along with him to get some information from the person, the husband. And when I got in there and we heard that door click, that clink up, I said, "I know I'm not going to jail." And then she was encouraging when I ran for city commission. And I want to thank that family for all they have done because the sheriff helped us get transitionally through integration of the city of Palaca. He went to restaurants during the time and told the people who had restaurants and federal government saying that they would integrate by a certain time. And if they weren't, he'd put a padlock on them. They believed him. And we had a good transition from that segregation of restaurants and the integration of restaurants in the city of Palaca.
If you don't mind, I mean, I'm gonna be out of uniform, but I can give her... Do we have any additional... Oh, yeah. We can all see that. I'd like to give you a token of love from City of Palaca, for all your mother did for the city and having. So I'd like to thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warren. Thank you.
You probably need to dance too because she gonna have to beat that brother. She should have a problem.
We don't wanna fight.
No fight.
Thank you so much. You guys are sweet to do that.
And definitely, we thank you and we definitely thank you for sharing your mother with us. And our prayers and thoughts will be with you during this rough time. Next up is our hometown hero award. We just had an opportunity to pay homage to the legacy of a hometown hero. And we're also, we're gonna continue in that same tradition by celebrating another great woman of this community. We're gonna ask Ms. Marsha Marinella if she would come forward at this time.
Guys.
So... This will probably be... Most of us are familiar with Keep Putnam Beautiful, or at least the term Keep Putnam Beautiful. But this is the person, this is the lady, this is the icon, who stands behind what Keep Putnam Beautiful is all about. I've had an opportunity to work with her really closely over the last two and a half years. But she is a one-person team by herself. She works one end of the county to the other. She works tirelessly. She's completely committed to this community, making sure that we eradicate blight, that we bring in programs, that there's support from municipalities, for community organizations. And nobody, there's not many people in this community that love the community as much while work is hard. I've learned more about trash collection. I've learned more about recycling. I've learned more about just orchestrating teams together. She has worked tirelessly over the last couple of years to put together a team of over 500 people, over 500 volunteers to collect trash on one day. Our cleanup, greeted up project is our county-wide cleanup. She has been an instrumental part of the success of the Palaca Pride Initiative with the Palaca Police Department, the fire department, and the commission as a whole. We've collected over 180,000 pounds of trash inside the city of Palaca during the Palaca Pride Initiative. And this lady here is at the helm of all of that. She's always there. She's always committed. She always has that smile on her face. Even in frantic moments, she has that smile on her face. And I just want to present you with this hometown hero award. We... You know, your retirement is gonna be a sad day for all of us. But we wanna let you know how much we really appreciate you and the efforts that you give. And this award says, "The Palaca Hometown Hero Award, presented to Marsha Marinella, in grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and the success of the city of Palaca and Putnam County, your community service and advocacy. Palaca City Commission and Staff, July 27, 2017."
It's funny. I was told to come to the meeting tonight and don't wear the clothes I usually wear for a trash day. He just looked at me and said, "Dress pretty." And I'm going, "My God, what's this all about?" So I wanna thank you for this honor, really. First of all, it's a labor of love. But second of all, I can't do my job without everybody in the community. I can't be a success without the people who live in Putnam County and in Palaca. And all the support I get from our city leaders, our community organizations and groups, really, it's a total collaborative effort. Trust me, one person cannot clean up all of Putnam County. But I can't thank you enough for this. I really appreciate it. I just hope that once I do finally retire, things don't change, that we continue to look at beautifying our community, keeping it clean, and especially showing our young people that this is what we are supposed to do so that the legacy lives on. All I can say to you is, "Thank you, guys. I appreciate it." And the next time if I'm here, I'll be back in my cleanup clothes because that's what I'm more comfortable in. So thanks again.
We also want you to hang out. We're gonna take some pictures, take a break.
Okay.
We'll take some photos as well. But before you exit, we have any comments from the commission?
I can certainly say it was certainly a pleasure working with you for the years I've been on the commission, helping and knowing that you reach all across the city and you give everything. You give everything back to your community that you love. And it's gonna be a big void with you leaving. I don't know if it's anybody that can replace you. We're gonna certainly miss you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Again, thank you for all your dedication, your hard work that you've put in. It goes out there. The award is only a sample of the recognition that you're supposed to receive. I mean, it's all across this community, your hands. And the work that you've done is all across this community. So we're forever grateful. And you're not really... We're tired, we're just taking a small break because we know it's hard to let something go that you're so passionate about. So we know that we'll continue to see you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say the trash lady. They said, "Oh, there's the trash lady." Gone with the bag. You know, when you say you retire, that just opens the door for people to bug you about other things.
I know.
I'm sure that you're gonna be missed doing what you used to do, but you'll be around.
I'm sure.
There's a bunch of things we need to do for this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's give another round of applause. For the lady who coined the phrase Keep Putnam Beautiful. Commissioner McCaskill-Williams, if you would come down at this time. I've got a presentation for you for your completion of your EMO certification. This is a letter that comes from Lynn Tipton of the Florida League of Cities. It says, "On behalf of John Scott Daly, Florida Institute of Government and the Florida League of Cities, I am pleased to award this certificate to you for the completion of 18 hours of instruction at the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials in Tampa, Florida, on June 2nd through 4th, 2017. It is our sincere hope that you found the program challenging and worthwhile. Now that you've taken the basic EMO, we encourage you to attend the advanced institute offer annually. We encourage you to take advantage of the training opportunities through the Florida League of Cities University and the Institute of Government. We strongly believe that your attendance at these institutes is indicative of your continued commitment to improving the quality of municipal government in Florida. If we may give any assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to call upon us. And we'd also like to present you with your certificate of completion for your Institute for Elected Municipal Officials, completed June 2nd through 4th, 2017, Tampa, Florida. This goes to you, Commissioner Tammy G. Williams." We now get to celebrate a retirement. Mr. Melvin Register, water treatment plant supervisor, 31 years of service. Would you come forward at this time with your family? You didn't expect to be up front? Mr. Suggs, could you join me? Mr. Griffin, is there?
No, sir.
We have anyone else in the water treatment plant?
We're all working support.
To the infamous Melvin Register, true water man. Presented to Melvin Register, Water Treatment Plant Superintendent, October 2nd, 1986 to August 1st, 2017, with gratitude and appreciation for 31 years of outstanding service to the citizens, officials, and staff of the City of Palaca, Palaca City Commission, July 27, 2017. You would truly be missed in this community.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I've been asked to say a couple words by Melvin, but you know, after 31 years, it's not a couple of words. That's a career and a lifetime. The City of Palaca's been very fortunate, very blessed to have you as part of our family for 31 years, Melvin. And we're all gonna be very sorry to see you go. We're very excited for your future and for what it is that you're going to be doing next in your life. And I just wanna tell you, as a city manager, knowing that you were there every day on the job made life a whole lot easier for me. And I really appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Yes, sir. Thank you, Matt.
I wanna thank everybody here at First with Dust in beautiful Palaca. 31 years is a long time. Back when I got out of the military, the city gave me an opportunity to start a career here. And I appreciate it. Been a lot of challenges over the years, but it's been a privilege to work for the City of Palaca and an honor to serve the citizens of the City of Palaca for these years. Like I said, we have some challenges, and we've got some great things to done as well. And there's still great things happening here. That's good to see. The city, they have some bad times. It's turned around now. The city's turning. It's great things, great things in the city, my hometown. Anyway, thank you very much. I'm moving on with this side of the wheels. Keep on keeping on. Thank y'all very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Santa Claus retired?
Oh!
Santa Claus is still there?
Oh, he's still here.
There was somebody that made a comment that I was bigger than Santa Claus in that picture.
Don't let him listen. Don't let him make you feel bad.
But I can tell you, we...
Heaven's Day, we wanna take a picture with you too.
We're definitely gonna miss you. We're definitely gonna miss you. I can tell you, when we went through the numerous workshops on Floridazation, I learned more from you during that time. Just the institutional knowledge that you have about your craft, the commitment to this community. It's gonna be missed. And we definitely appreciate your service and your dedication to the city of Palaca.
Thank you very much.
Next up, recommendation of city employees for life-saving award. I'm gonna ask that Captain Nukem, as well as our fire marshal, Assistant Chief, Mr. J.R. Grimes, come up at this time.
I'm Matt Nukem. I'm the support service captain for the police department here in Palaca. This evening, Assistant Chief Grimes and I are gonna present the commission and everyone here on two acts of good deeds or good work that members of the fire department and the police department did. The first one was on June 30. Officer Tom Tipton responded to the city doc for a call for service. While attending to this call for service, Officer Tipton was notified that a citizen was unresponsive and needed assistance at the playground area. Officer Tipton responded and discovered a man was in cardiac arrest. Officer Tipton began CPR and continued with the help of retired fire marshal Mark Linity, locally here with our police department... I'm sorry, our fire department, and other citizens until rescue arrived. The subject was later identified as Darryl Baldwin. Mr. Baldwin was at the park at the time of the incident with his two grandchildren. Later in the night, Chief Quinn Romey, with the Putnam County Department of Emergency Services, called to praise Officer Tipton and the fire department for their quick actions which saved Mr. Baldwin's life. So we would like to recognize... Chief Linity? Chief Linity, as well as C. Shift for the fire department.
Firefighter Davis, Demarc, and Captain Myers isn't with us tonight. He's off today, and we have one more.
And then Officer Tipton, unfortunately, is on vacation, is out of state.
It's for all today, thank you. Chief, one day, thank you. Hey, he left his truck in the middle of the road with the door wide open to go out there and help. So that was one of the things that was said, you know, he was basically just still like it was back in his prime. He just bailed out, did his job. So he's done. Thank you.
The second event that we want to bring to everyone's attention, the fire department staff that responded to this incident, as well as the police department staff that responded, those two members actually did life-saving techniques while they were off duty and at a sandbar here at the river. This incident occurred on July 1st. While at the local sandbar, enjoying time with friends and family, Sergeant Mike Meredith of the Palaca Police Department and Assistant Fire Chief J.R. Grimes heard loud screams for help and shouts stating that a child was underwater. On this particular day, there was a strong outgoing tide on the edge of the sandbar. As Sergeant Meredith and Assistant Chief Grimes rushed to assist, they noticed a family of five being swept out into the open waters by the tide. All members of the family were struggling to stay above water. The family of five consisted of a husband, wife, two children, and an elderly woman believed to be the grandmother. Sergeant Meredith swam to the assistance of the family just as one of the children began to go underwater. With the assistance of Chief... I'm sorry, Assistant Chief J.R. Grimes, as well as J.T. Stout, who's the principal of the Palaca High School, and an additional unknown citizen with a pontoon boat, who assisted in getting the family to safety and back to the sandbar. Everyone else who was there that day, who spoke about the event, said that that family would have perished had it not been for the assistance of these individuals.
Let's give it up again for our first responders. Many times, it's a thankless job to those guys. And you know, it's just, it does us good to know that we can actually give them some recognition for the things that they do that on a continual basis, daily, they save lives. But it's just an awesome testament to the people that we have working here with the city of Palaca, as well as our great citizens like Principal Stout. So again, we just wanna thank you guys for all that you do. And we wanna just tell you that your works do not go unnoticed. Next up, it's gonna be the longest presentation of the evening. But it's also one of our favorites, Commissioner Campbell and Deborah Robinson. And if you could please come forward because we've got some wonderful young people that we are gonna celebrate right now. And so as these two come up, I wanna make sure that it's not caught on deaf ears and it doesn't go unstated that the work that these two individuals have done with our interns this year, along with our department heads and the staff as a whole, is second to none. Our young folks have gone through various life trainings and everything else. Our young folks have gone through various life trainings and everything else, and I'm on the clock. And so again, I want to thank Commissioner Campbell for his dedication, as well as Ms. Robinson for your hard-working effort in working with these young people. So again, we just thank you for all that you do, and it does not go unnoticed. You've got two minutes.
Just prior to Ms. Brown speaking, I just want to publicly say thank you. We've actually gotten together and combined our words so that we would not get the little angel bell this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to let Ms. Robinson say what we both have been thinking. And if we take over two minutes, just take it off your top at the end.
City, everyone. Commissioner Campbell and I would first like to start by saying thank you to the parents, the family, and friends, along with the staff. Without your push, this would have been a difficult eight weeks for these students. The interns were divided into various areas of the city's workforce to gain and perform real-world and work-life experiences. They quickly learned that the workforce was different from home chores and school responsibilities. They were exposed to resume writing and interviewing techniques, financial literacy. The associate provost from the Thune Cookman, Dr. Gale, came to speak to them about college prep and financial aid. They met with commissioners, the mayor, even Senator Perry. They worked side-by-side with students from Philadelphia and Texas and built a bond with each other by simply working together. We could not be more proud of the accomplishments that they've made this summer, and we look forward to their continued future and their success. Congratulations, interns. All interns today will receive a certificate of completion that reads, "The certificate of completion has completed 160 hours of the 2017 summer internship with the city of Palatka. Signed, Mayor Terry Hill, Commissioner Justin Campbell, City Manager Terry Suggs, and Human Resources Deborah Robinson." Without further ado, here are your interns for the city of Palatka and your future leaders. We've been asked if we could withhold all of your applause until all of the names have been read. When I call your names, interns, please come up. Lenora Battles, who worked at the River Center. Shalante Boyd, who was at Building and Zone, who's not here this evening because she has her second job this summer. Cameron Chandler, who worked in the Parks Department, who's now on her second job, but he will be attending Trinity Baptist College this fall. Ms. Fosia Lee, who worked in Human Resources, who will be attending Flow Arts St. John's River College this fall. Diana Manley, who worked at the Fire Department. Ms. Carly Patton, also with the Fire Department. She learned how to scrub and clean trucks. Samantha Stevenson, who worked at the River Center. Courtney Tillis, accounting. She learned how to pay bills. Cameron Tucker, Building and Zone.
This is my selfie part, huh?
Last but not least, Mr. Caleb Wester. Learned a lot about red light traffic. These are our 2017 summer interns.
Just one last thing before the mayor comes back to snatch the mic.
All the time.
The group of individuals that you see in front of you are the second class that we've had for this internship. They have demonstrated what hard work is. They have demonstrated what perseverance is, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. The individuals that you see up here, or the vast majority of them, I have invited to join my youth council, which is newly formed to the city of Palatka. Here in the city of Palatka, we have to make sure that we hear the voices of our youth, and these are going to be the individuals that you see work with me to make sure that the voices of the children of Palatka and the teens of Palatka and the younger constituents of Palatka are heard. So they are not just our interns. This is the youth board, our youth council board, that will be working hand-in-hand with me. Thank you.
We want to make sure that we recognize the parents and the family members who are here today. And we just want to thank you guys for lending your children to us, for the great jobs that you've done with them, each and everyone has been wonderful with us, and we just thank you because this all starts at home. For our children to truly be able to succeed, it takes a village to raise them, but it has to start with those values being instilled at home, and so we thank you. We'll take a photo after we take a break after this last presentation. In our last presentation, I'm going to ask Commissioner Wiggins if she can help me with this. And for this presentation, we're recognizing all our Fourth of July fireworks contributors. We want to recognize the community partners who gave during this event, and we just want to say thank you to each and everyone who provided some assistance to the city for a wonderful firework. There were a little bit of technical difficulties this year, but with the help of the sheriff's office, we put the fire out pretty quick. And so, but overall, I think the fireworks is just a great opportunity for this community to come together, celebrate. You see groups of people in, and it's a very wonderful part of traditions of Palatka, and we're waiting for the boat races to come back. So without further ado, we're going to move through. We've got Waste Pro, and they're not going to be here with us tonight, but we want to make sure we recognize them. William Nicole Ainsworth, the fourth M.D., Dr. Ainsworth Office. Angels Diner. Animal Health Centers. Arctic Air Incorporated. They're all about busy work. Bates &amp; Hewitt and Floyd Insurance. Florida Pest Control. Johnson and Overture Funeral Homes Incorporated. Masters Funeral Home. Matthews Moving and Storage Incorporated. Everybody got the memo. Robert E. Taylor, Architect. Vistar Credit Union. I see somebody with a Vistar tag on. You want to take this forward? You want to represent Vistar? These plaques read as follows. Certificate of Recognition. The certificate of recognition and appreciation is presented to AmerisBank. Is there a representative from AmerisBank here? Seem no one. Azelia Health. We'll get that Vice Mayor Brown.
Come on down, honey.
Beck Automotive. Florida Power and Light. Got Mr. Mike Garmer to the back. And we thank you guys for your continued support in the city of Palatka.
Want him to stand here and show like...
Well, you at least have one more person with you. Blacka Gas Authority. Palatka Daily News. Oh, you got to stand up front. Take it with you. Papa John's Pizza. Seminole Electric. And again, let's thank our sponsors. Thank you. I also want to give a special thanks out to Ms. Mandy Tucker, Ms. Betsy Driggers, Ms. Vicki Young, and the work that you guys did in working with us, getting sponsorships in place this year. I think we set a record for sponsorships for this year, which, in essence, leads to less money coming out of the budget for fireworks, and it's all a citizens-driven project, and so we definitely thank you for that. And with that being said, we're going to stand adjourned for five minutes to take photos, and then we will reconvene. On to item two of the agenda, which is our public comment section. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? We've got one public comment card. We've got this Alice Cooper, 2006 Carr Street.
Alice Cooper, 2006 Carr Street. I would like to, I guess, do a formal complaint against the street sweeper. On Sunday morning, which would have been July 2nd, I had had a sale on Thursday and Friday and Saturday, so I was dog-dead tired. I am laying in my bed, and all of a sudden, I thought, what is that? It was the street sweeper at 5:00 a.m., going down Carr Street. Went down Carr Street, I got out of bed and thought, what is this? Without my glasses, y'all all look blurry. Well, I didn't have my glasses on, and it was like a UFO going down the street in the dark, dark with all these lights going. So I thought, oh, that's the street sweeper. He came back the second time. He turned around, he went back the third time, and then he came back the fourth time. On Carr Street, it's brick, it's kind of, they call it something, kind of rock-crested, rounded crown. Okay, when you go down on this side, there were two little tracts of dirt, and then coming back this way on that other side, two little tracts of dirt. Dirt didn't go anywhere, didn't get swept, it's a waste of money, and especially on a Sunday morning. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Tell us something about those library houses.
About what?
The library, about books. I thought you were going to say something about books.
You want to talk about books?
We'll talk about other things. Your comments are duly noted. I saw the city manager taking notes.
You said the money for a new dump truck. That's on the agenda.
We need a trash truck too, but that's another, that's another item.
Sell the sweeper to get the truck truck.
Anyone else here for public comments, or wants to talk about a book? Seem no one close to public comment. Consent agenda. Item A, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-70, authorizing the submission of a grant pre-application package and execution of Federal Aviation Administration fiscal year 2017 Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer for Design and Construction of the Runway 17-35 and Taxiway Seat 3 Pavement and Lighting Rehabilitation Project contingent upon receipt of FAA Grant Offer 3-12-0061-027-2017, via Adopt Resolution 2017-12-71, authorizing the mayor and city manager and city clerk execute an attest to order Department of Corrections Work Squad Agreement Number W-1112 to provide one inmate work squad to the city of Palatka for a one-year term beginning August 24th, 2017. C, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-72, authorizing execution of a mutual agreement with Tag Grounding Services Incorporated, extending agreement for disaster debris removal services for 120 days effective August 1st, 2017. D, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-73, adopting the fraud policy and personnel rules and regulations. E, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-74, removing and eliminating the code enforcement dating fines and liens on 808 North 18th Street. C, Case Number 2007-00094, Mary Ann Jones, owner. F, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-75, awarding bid to 8HMMN Construction for ITV 2017-13, continuing services for concrete sidewalk replacement and authorize execution of the agreement for services. G, Special Events Permit Number 17-44, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for duration of the event and to waive application deadline for FCCU Open Bass Tournament, 7/29/17, 7/30/17, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Steven Tang, Florida Bass Nation applicant. H, Special Events Permit Number 17-43, permission to exceed allowable noise levels and to waive application deadline for Judge Isaac Bronson Memorial Ceremony, 8/13/17, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Bronson Mahullen House. Michael Borton in Marshall Lane, Pudman County Historical Society applicant. I, Special Events Permit Number 17-41, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for never-going-back tour Concert 2800, Catherine Street, on 8/19/17, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Adam Elam applicant. J, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-80, accepting proposals for renewal of employee health and dental insurance from Florida Blue and Vision Insurance from Humana for the policy period 10/1/2017 to 9/30/2018. Are there any items of the consent agenda that we need to have removed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion for a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four of the agenda. Community Redevelopment Agency Business, resolution awarding a loan of $7,000 and a grant of $2,076 to the Bartram Trail Committee for the Bartram Frolic.
A resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, awarding a central business district TIF funds grant of $2,076 and loan of $7,000 to the Bartram Trail Committee to the 2017 Bartram Frolic Special Event.
There's a motion for floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seem no one to have closed public hearing. Is there any public discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda, I'm sorry, item six of the agenda. Resolution setting a date for public hearing to consider adoption of the 2017 Fire Assessment Rate and Fund Fire Protection Services with no change in rate of assessment from 2016 and memorializing staff direction.
A resolution of the City Commission of the city of Palatka, Florida pertaining to special assessments to fund fire protection services and facilities, providing for direction and confirming the annual process necessary for City Commission consideration of the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund fire protection services and facilities, and providing an effective date.
Second.
Motion for floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seem no one, we will close public hearings. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Well, first of all, we got to set a date, and I would suggest we got our first budget hearing on September 14th, I believe, so I would suggest that we set this meeting for either August 31st or at the latest, September 7th. Both of those are Thursday nights. We can do this at 5:00 o'clock. I believe we need to have this hearing prior to adopting... I believe we need to give us a time in there before we have our first budget hearing on September 14th, so one of those two dates would work. Either one is going to be up to the commission, either August 31st or September 7th. Or? Yeah, or, yes, yes. So I know we're going to be out of town that third week of August, and we generally don't have any meetings in August, but, you know, just need to get this scheduled because we got a 20-day advertisement that's mandatory.
So you need to go with...
Is that what, October 31st? August 31st then.
Okay. And secondly, if I would, Mr. Mayor, if I could have just another minute. Once we, you know, this is extremely important because we've had our budget discussions, and Mr. Reynolds will probably talk about this later, but when we had our budget workshop, it was very imperative that we're all understanding that the fire assessment fee pays $1.3 million for our funding the Fire Department. If we set our millage on our next item of business, we need to make sure that we understand the severity of what we're fixing to do. If we were to not fund this fire fee resolution, then we would be somewhere in the neighborhood, I believe, Mr. Reynolds is at a 9.8 mill to be able to make up the difference that the general fund would receive in order to fund our Fire Department. So when we set our tentative millage rate on our next item of business, we need to understand the significance of what we're fixing to do. So when we come here on August 31st to have this resolution, we need to know exactly what we're looking at. We're talking $1.3 million, and I don't believe we have that in reserves to make up. So the only way to do that would be to raise your millage back to a 9.8.
I'd just like to say, I think that we need to give it another year of chance for another year, but I'm asking that we have city manager and city treasurer take a look at it to make sure we're going to do it for the next year, that we have all the facts and figures, you know, if we can do it better or do what we need to do for our citizens.
Can you add a comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this will be our third year of having a fire fee in existence. The first year, as you know, the city mailed out its own individual bills, and we received the fire fee assessment back based on those bills. This year, it was placed on the tax bill, which means that we recoup a lot of those fees that were not recouped the first year. My suggestion is to have the third year for leveling out years when we see where we're at. We also, the property priser's office notified us that we had a 5.9% increase in property values for this year. The fire assessment fees are actually assessed on last year's certified values, so that 5.9% increase would not... 5.9% increase will not go into effect on the fire assessment until next year. So it would give us an opportunity moving forward after October 1st to see what the significance of that increase in property values will be, to give us an opportunity to come back to the commission and see if there's an opportunity to lower those fire assessment fees and make it easier for the city commission as well as our citizens, and to maintain our millage rate at a 6.4 millage rate as opposed to having to raise it back to a 9.8. Is there any room on the fire assessment side in terms of adjusting the rate? And what would that mean in terms of if it dropped a little bit? Would that, would that impact anything?
Issue?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of what it would do in terms of money, like, okay.
Got any? That's our mayor. Any change to the rate would result in a loss of revenue that would have to be made up some other way. You know, as we've talked about in the budget workshops, budget at that point in time was about $54,000 in the red, so we could look at changing the way the rate is done, the per parcel rate and the per thousand dollar rate, but if you change one of those, you have to change the other so that it makes up for that lost revenue. So essentially, changes to one or the other would have to be made up that way.
And we just pretty much type all the way through everything, where we'll just type through everything in terms of, alright, so I'm good.
Any comments? Question?
I want to say this one, other thing for, I think that we do it in the point of view, but I also want us to make sure for the next year we look at it, because now we tack it on to people's property tax, and if people get behind it, their property taxes, after they use the new residence. So if we do it this year, I want us to make sure we look at what's going on so that we do not have anybody on us. And I think that we probably need this year just to make sure we get where we need to be in having our city where it needs to be to function and take care of the people we need to take care of.
Any comments? Seeing no, call the question. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda. 2017 Trim Calendar Resolution Setting the Tentative Millage Rate for 2017-18 Budget Year 6.4 Mill.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida, adopting the tentative millage rate of 6.4000 mills for the levying of annual taxes for the fiscal year 2017-2018 and providing for an effective date.
So, motion on the floor in a second. We're not open for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six of the, item seven of the agenda. Resolution USDA's CF Grand Application for Purchase of Dump Truck and Skid Steer or Equivalent Authorizing Application Execution and Submitting of All Grand Agreement Documents to Obtain USDA Rural Development CF Grants for 40% of the Cost to Purchase a Dump Truck and Skid Steer Equivalent Accepting Grant Funds in Amount of $83,000.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing an application for a United States Department of Agriculture Community Facilities Grant to Fund 48% of the Purchase Cost of a Dump Truck and Skid Steer Loader or their equivalent, and authorizing execution and submittal of all necessary documents in connection therewith, including USDA forms RD 1942-47, Loan Resolutions for Public Bodies to Accept Grants in an Amount Not to Exceed $83,000. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Moving on to the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight of the agenda, 4001 Krill Avenue Plant and Board Recommendation to Annex and Amendment Future Land Use Map from Putnam County Urban Services US to Commercial COM for annexed property and rezoned this and three other adjacent properties from City C2 Intensive Commercial and Putnam County C2 General Commercial to PUD C2 Plan Unit Development Intensive Commercial. Owners are FAB Properties LLC and McComb Homes. Advocates Race Track Petroleum Incorporated. Item A Annexation Order, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palatka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 4001 Krill Avenue, located in Section 11 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palatka and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. No, for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Just take your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm, 301 East Pine Street in Orlando. Just wanted to reiterate, but we said last time, that we appreciate your support, available for any questions, and we're excited about the project. And Mayor, my comments kind of applied, I guess, to street, separate ordinances, so they apply to all three. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Public hearing, sorry. Is there any further discussion on item A? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, future land use amendment ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than 10 acres in size from Putnam County US Urban Service to City COM Commercial for 4001 Krill Avenue located in Section 11 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're not open for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Any further discussion?
Please.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item C, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida be amended as to that certain property located in Section 11 Township 10 South, Range 26 East, including 4001 Krill Avenue and three adjacent parcels located between South State Road 19 and Florida Avenue and between Krill Avenue and the Palatka Marketplace Shopping Center be rezoned from Putnam County C2 General Commercial and City C2 Intensive Commercial to PUD/C2 Plan Unit Development/Intensive Commercial, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're open to the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question is called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item nine of the agenda. Item A, Riverboat Number One Updated Potential Authorization for Continuation of Litigation. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, sir. If you'll recall the history of this matter, we filed litigation some time ago, and after negotiations and discussions with the bond company and Poseidon LLC, which was the contracting party with the city for the construction of the riverboats, we entered into an attempt to resolve the issue without litigation for all the obvious reasons. Those negotiations did ultimately produce one boat, the boat that we have now, but the second boat has not been produced, and quite frankly, as of July 7th, the contracting party of Poseidon had missed the deadlines that had been established in the negotiations as a condition of us not moving forward with litigation. Mr. Griffith isn't here now, but his last inspection of the boat revealed that the milestones had not been reached, that the destruction had not progressed, and substantial items were left to be completed in order for the boat to be available for delivery. So, Mr. Cunningham had stopped communicating with Mr. Griffith, and I then contacted the bond company attorney, and basically that's who I have contacted is the bond company attorney. Mr. Cunningham is now represented by counsel, but our conversations have been with the bond company attorney primarily in the negotiations and attempts to resolve this matter. We now have a conference call set for August 1st, which will involve all parties, and maybe something will develop from that, but if it doesn't develop from that, this matter needs to be brought to and closed one way or the other. And so I guess what I was doing is simply advising the commission and suggesting to the commission that if that August 1 telephone conference doesn't produce something, the city manager would be attending, if it doesn't produce something different than the promises that we've been given in the past, I think that our next move is to move forward with the litigation, win, lose, or draw, and put this thing up, get it behind us one way or the other.
That's why we have you, and I know I'm in support of your recommendation, so if that's what we need to do, let's go ahead and do it.
Tell a motion.
I'll make a motion. To the recommendation of Attorney Holmes.
Second.
There's a motion in the second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
That was quick. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
You know, that boat that he has, that he picked up is one that he had given to us, and it didn't need anything before they even got here, but the motors dropped and it was basically done, so.
We walked over, it wasn't basically done.
He reshaped the boat with the, I guess, facade and superstructure and one thing or another, but the motors are still not in it, obviously they were not, and Mr. Griffith looked at it, the controls were not in it, and it's not in a state that is even close to delivering, and it's gonna take some money to put it in a state of delivery, so, and it's not our money anymore. We don't owe him any money, let's put it that way.
Any else? Budget update, Mr. Reynolds.
Just to give a quick update to the commission, if you'll all recall, we had the first budget workshop two weeks ago, and the general fund at that point in time was about $54,000 in the red, but we did have $60,000 in a one-time capital expenditure in the Information Technology Fund. All of you adopted in the consent agenda our health insurance, dental, and vision renewal. Health insurance renewal was better than anticipated. We originally had 20% of the budget, it was 8.5%, so I put that information into the budget, and the general fund is now $30,000 to the good, so the general fund budget is balanced. I just wanted to make that clear. The only other change I've made to the budget is something else that the commission also just adopted, that USDA grant for the dump truck and the skid steer. Rebecca from the USDA called us and basically said they only had $83,000 to apply to any one of those three projects that we applied for, that we actually had in the Better Place budget. So I've made that change, and I've taken the other two projects out because that's obviously not going to happen next year, and that took Better Place reserves to about $340,000 at the end of next year. So those are the only changes that we've made to the budget, so both of them being positive ones.
We're always welcome good news. Absolutely. It's been a much anticipated break that we've been through. That's the part we can't tell you, Scott.
We write it too.
We definitely appreciate that, and it's a testament to the things that have been done with the work of both Mr. Suggs and Mr. Reynolds and this commission, so we definitely thank you.
Mr. Suggs, anything to add? Let you go first, didn't it?
Oh, wow, talk me off guard. Really, the only thing is, is, you know, tonight was a great night for us. We had as probably as much recognition tonight, public recognition as a good opportunity to do that, which is always good. I do want to take an opportunity to thank the staff, all my staff, of course, but especially those in public safety who understand what not ever being off duty means, you know, and for folks like Martin Lundy, who is a retired firefighter, who saw a knee, and I saw him, he stopped right in the middle of the street and jumped out on a dead man to go help, and, you know, for the high school principal, J.T. Stout, to risk his life and his family's future to do what he did. You know, it's just one of those things that we never know how we're going to respond until we're in that situation, but I will commend all of them for what they've done and what they continue to do for our citizens, and we just hope that if I was ever faced with that, I'd have the courage that they had. So again, thank you very much for all that you guys do out there. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes.
We're good.
Robinson.
Good.
Capelook.
Really? Really? It's good for you to come up, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Let us know what's going on.
Two things on some old business that we had at the police department as part of our PAL program. You guys are aware, we had our PAL summer camp. It has concluded, everything went well. We had 113 kids in camp. We also had student counselors that worked with the other children, they did a great job in working with the program. The counselors were two-part. They had a part-time, 20-hour paid job per week, and then the other 20 hours was for community service that they can use throughout the year for schooling, for their grants for college and stuff. So Captain Williams oversaw that program for us, and he wanted me to bring it to the commission's attention tonight, indicating what a great job that our counselors did with our children. The other thing is, on the 21st, we did the backpack giveaway with just a multitude of community partners, so many that as Toby started to name them tonight, I just said, I'm gonna say multitude, because there are a bunch of them. This partnership allowed us to hand out 285 backpacks full of school supplies, and we were also able to give between eight and 12 additional backpacks to some of our teachers so that if they have children that come in that don't have any supplies, we will be able to help those families as well. Some future events that are gonna be going on in August for our department, one is, the first one is National Night Out, is this coming Tuesday, August 1st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We are going to host our portion of National Night Out at Rosa K Rag sale apartment complex over off of Moody Road. We have partnered with, again, numerous community partner members, and we will be serving, Toby said, a lot of food. We're gonna have games for the kids, several bounce houses, and we are going to be giving out additional school supplies that have come in post the backpack giveaway. Yes, sir?
Is there a flyer that we can?
Yes, sir, it's on our Facebook page, but I'll have Captain Williams email it to you. And then the last thing that I have, August 12th, we are hosting for the Putnam County Boy Scout troops that are within our county, we are going to be hosting a crime prevention merit badge class for those scouts. It is voluntary for the scouts, as long as the scouts have the permission of their parents and their scoutmaster, they are welcome to attend, and that is gonna be on Saturday, August 12th at 8:30 AM. And there is a lot that these young boys who are turning into men have to do to earn that merit badge, other than the merit badge responsibilities that we're gonna go over with them, we're gonna have members of our SWAT team there, we're gonna have a K-9 demonstration there for them. Mike Lassiter, who's our evidence tech, is gonna be there, and he's gonna show them how we process crime scenes and other new things of that nature. So just wanna let you guys know what we have going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Let's prove.
Mayor Fisher, State Department Director, I could quickly run through two things of interest. We have inspected the apartments for the century block, the building official and ITA for zoning in the building. We're gonna regroup tomorrow and talk about our findings. We're going to regroup tomorrow and talk about our findings and see where we are with the project. The act is very anxious to get a CO, and everybody's moving in, so we're trying to help as much as we can while being very careful about making sure the codes goes in there. We are working with an infill developer who's trying to partner with PHA for more senior family homes. So far, this has gone very well, I think. We have the same ideas about cottage communities and very good planning, family plan developments. The Crystal Cove PUD, Army Park PUD comes back in September, so be prepared for that. We have a meeting scheduled for the week of August twenty-first with the developer to see the revised plans that you proposed, so we'll make sure that everything is ready for you to look at. We are working with Putnam County Planning on the business park plat, we're trying to get to where we can have a pre-approved plat for any potential entities that come in and want to locate there. That's going very well. The planning board meeting is next week, two items, one is conditional use for a church in Madison in the unit next to the Family Market, and the other is the New Dollar Store on Seventh and Reed that wants to take out some champion trees. We did take that request to the tree advisory board and got their opinion on it, so that will be considered as well. That's all I have.
Excuse me, Kayla, what was that first one again, next to Family Market?
Condition use for a church, because it's within three hundred feet of an alcohol-selling establishment, which is the Family Market next door.
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cropp.
Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Griggers.
Busy week.
Mr. Holmes. Ms. Tucker looks like she has something.
It's very brief.
Come on, darling, tell us what you know.
I just wanted to give you all a quick update on the SRF applications that we put in for the potable project. We put in one for a construction loan and one for a planning loan. Both have been set for meetings, which either I or Mr. Grigger, because both of us will attend. The planning loan meeting is August ninth. They've actually put us on the grant list first. If funding is available, we can get fifty percent grant there, otherwise it'll be a hundred percent loan. And the construction application is at the November eighth meeting, and we're very optimistic that we can keep that capital project going with these plans. That's all I have.
And another grant came in for, what about baseball grant?
We had, we had an equipment grant come in for the baseball program. We got twelve hundred dollars worth of equipment, and it cost us fifty dollars in shipping. So that was very appreciated for the city.
Also, Florida Power and Light committed to be a partner as well.
Yeah, he told me he was going to email me about that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for your thoughts? No, sir.
Vice Mayor Brown.
I don't care if there's anything missing. Surprise.
Mr. Borb.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Williams.
Not much, just want to say that I had opportunity to go down and celebrate Johnson's homecoming. I didn't even know that Johnson had a homecoming, and they had a parade, it was nice, it wasn't that long. I won't complain about our parades anymore, but it was nice to be a part of that, to be at the witness staff and watch the guys play some softball down there. That was very interesting.
You missed my three home runs on Sunday.
Really? Also, just some food for God, I've been having a conversation, I had a brief conversation with Dr. Rixer, and see the superintendent regarding us possibly having the student of the month meetings over in the schoolroom, so he said that's definitely something that we could consider, so I want you all to kind of.
Does he think our meeting room's too small?
Well, no, I kind of approached him with that, because I think that'd be great.
Really, it's too small?
Also, I've been talking with Mr. Suggs about possibly getting together, I guess, sometime in August and creating a strategic plan for the city, so that's something now. What do I say? I mean, I'm sorry, so, just some things, I usually try not to say much, but that's it.
Mr. Campbell.
I do. No, I just want to say, I'm truly excited about what I'm seeing in the city of Palatka. I had the opportunity of speaking with Mr. Deputy for a brief moment, and everyone knows that Mr. Deputy is a, he's tough, and he doesn't mind letting you know how he feels about something. And when we spoke to him, he had nothing but good things to say, so that alone is music to my ears. He spoke highly of our HR department and some of the things that she didn't toot her own horn for that, but Ms. Robinson spoke to the Palatka downtown businesses, and from that report, I've got, I've heard great things about it. So we're definitely excited about what we're seeing, and hopefully, with the prayer in Almighty God, that we continue to move this city forward in the direction that it needs to go. Thank you.
I got left tonight. Let's go before you change this back.